2025 here at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. Our first conversation is about the FIFA World Cup Advisory Committee. Mr. City Manager would like to give me kind of a heads up on that or kind of frame it?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I will have Sam Morris from the City Manager's Office come make a quick introduction for you, and then representatives from your World Cup Advisory Committee are here to present.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Sam Morris, your Chief of Emergency Operations. And tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about FIFA. I'm going to give you just a brief overview as to the data and the stats that we have currently. As each and every one of you know, I think I've had a conversation with most of you about this. Every single day is changing. There's new information coming out, so this is the most up-to-date information that we have so far. So, the World Cup is coming June 11th through July 19th of 2026. It's coming up pretty fast. We've got 443 days to go as of today. So, what makes this one different than all of the rest? Well, this is the 21st time that it has been hosted, FIFA in general. This is the second time that it's been in the United States, and the first time it was in the United States, it sold 3.5 million tickets, and it holds the record for ticket sales. So, this is a huge event, and we anticipate this one being even bigger. So, why? Because this is going to be a series of firsts. So, there's a lot of new things that are happening, this particular FIFA and World Cup, that have not happened in the past. So, this is going to be the first time that this tournament has ever been jointly hosted by 16 cities and in three different countries. So, you're going to have the United States, Canada, and Mexico hosting, and I'll show you a map of that here in just a second. This is the first time that we're going to have 12 groups instead of eight. This is the first time we're going to have 48 teams. Last time, in 2022, we only had 32. We're going to span this over 39-plus days, and the reason we say plus is because, obviously, with most sporting events, you're not coming in on the day. You're going to come in a few days before, and you may stay a few days after. So, this very easily could span much longer than the 39 set days that the tournament will be going on. And that includes 104 matches, which is up from 64 in 2022. So, here's a quick map of what we're working with here. You've got your two from Canada, your three from Mexico, and our 13 from here in the United States, coast to coast. Okay, so what does it look like? This is a very busy map, but these are all of the rounds of games that we've got. So, Kansas City is lucky enough, we're going to have six different games. The second-to-last game, you'll notice there, is the day before the Fourth of July, so there's a lot of eyes on that particular one. It's a round of 32, and then that last game, we're lucky enough to be able to have the quarterfinals here in Kansas City. Okay, so what does that mean for us? So, the area will primarily see well over 650 visitors. So, that number has changed multiple times. It's increased quite a bit. So, this is the, like I said, we're going off of the data that's coming from Visit KC 2026, and so we've got the FIFA officials coming, their sponsors, there's different licensees that are going to be there with media. There are invited guests, whether it be dignitaries, head of state, government. You've got entertainment with celebrities, different Fortune 500 companies that are coming in, things like that. So, I know several of you have heard that our area had to be able to support 55,000 hotel rooms, and so that has been accomplished. We've got three base camps that have been submitted that are waiting to be selected. Our next big announcement that should be coming out is what teams will we see here? That announcement is going to be in December, and so based off of that announcement, they will then decide what base camp they would like to go to. And base camp is basically a training facility. It's where they're able to go, be able to scrimmage, bring in different trainers, have their practices, and then they also stay very close by to that. So, they are considering that. Based off of these numbers, the invitees, they're estimating that at 2.1 million visitor days. So, if I go to this and I'm there for four days, that's four visitor days, although I'm just considered one person. So, what exactly does this mean for Independence? Well, you guys have put together a phenomenal FIFA committee, and I'm going to have the Chair, Eileen Weir, come up and kind of give you guys an overview as to what the group has been focused on and kind of the vision for where they see themselves going in the next few months, okay?
Thank you very much. My name is Eileen Weir. I am the Chair for the Independence World Cup Committee. We have a few of our committee members here with us, so I wanted to introduce them. Carlos Cabrera, who's the co-chair. Joyce White is here. J.J. Koontz is here, and way over here is Cindy Rogers. Sam's right, this is a phenomenal committee. It brings together a real diversity of different experiences from different cultures, many people who are very engaged with the soccer community and culture, a few people who have attended multiple World Cup matches, so can kind of give us their experience on what it's like, and people who have attended other major sporting events across the world. So, you've done an amazing job in putting together this committee, and we've really enjoyed getting to know each other and working together. It is a big task and a difficult one, so it's been, as most things are when we get started, it's been a little bit messy, kind of trying to figure out how to go about this, but I am here to report to you that we are making tremendous progress. We're very grateful to have Councilwoman Vaught sit in on most of our meetings, and so she's been a tremendous help as well. As you can see and as you know, you've appointed a fairly large committee, so we have subdivided that into three subcommittees. We have a Communications Committee, a Public Policy and Logistics Committee, and an Events and Celebrations Committee. We, as a steering committee, meet every month. The committee meetings, the committees meet at least monthly and often more than monthly, just as with the city council, we don't, there's no, there are not votes taken at the committees. They simply advise back up to the steering committee, and any decisions that are made are made by the entire steering committee. And other than approving the agenda, I don't believe we've taken any votes. So, we do, we are also having meetings with outside organizations and community groups, and our city staff, Sam primarily, but others on the city staff as well, are interfacing with the regional planning to the extent that that's possible. There's, although it feels like it's very soon, it's, there's still a lot of decisions and information that is forthcoming, so we're doing, you know, certainly on our committee and across the region, our very best to get ahead of things and prepare as much as we can, but certainly, there's still a lot of information that we don't have that makes that difficult. Some other meetings that we are conducting or have conducted, just today, I met with the Independence Chamber of Commerce. We have a meeting scheduled with the leaders of our Community Improvement Districts, and we will be planning a meeting with our Attractions and Historic Sites affinity groups. So, these are our Friends of the Veil, Friends of the Bingham, so on and so forth. And there were actually quite a few more than I had remembered or realized. And the purpose of these meetings are, one, general communication about what's happening, but we need support from some of these organizations and groups to be able to accomplish what we have, are setting out to accomplish, and they bring us tremendous resources. We also want to know from the Chamber of Commerce, for instance, what are you hearing from the needs of our business community? What are their concerns? How can we help them be prepared? Our Community Improvement Districts, what are you thinking about with the increased revenue that you can participate collecting from this event? You know, helping them to, you know, understand some of these numbers that Sam shared and the impact of this, so that they can make some plans. And same with our Attractions and Historic Sites. We want to make sure that people are prepared and that we can help them get prepared for additional visitors. I'm going to talk a little bit specifically about some of our, about the committees that we have formed. Our Communications Committee is focused both internally and externally, and when I say internally, I mean our visitors and businesses who are here all of the time, and externally, our visitors. We want to make sure that when people come to Independence and are visitors, that they feel welcome, that they can function in our community, and that they enjoy it and have the opportunity to experience the city of Independence. For our residents and our businesses, we want this to be, cause as little disruption as possible to their daily lives. It is going to be crowded. Our hotels will be full. If we think about our normal hotel occupancy, that's maybe about 60% to 70%, just increasing that by 30% or 40%, it's going to be a significant number of people in our town. So, you know, talking about how do we make this as manageable for our community as possible? The key project that we're working on in the Communications Committee is developing a logo and branding for the event. Lydia, on your staff, has been attending our meetings and has been tremendously helpful, so we're working on developing that, not just an image that we can use and deploy throughout the community, but also, very important, as you all know, behind the city brand is the story behind the brand, and developing that and really sharing that, not only through the city, but through our business community and neighborhoods for people here in Independence and across our region and even across the country as this gains national and regional and international, I should add, attention. Our Public Policy and Logistics Committee, which Councilmember Vaught has sat in with those several times, we're really looking at reviewing city codes and ordinances that might be impacted by this event and recommend some temporary adjustments. Unfortunately, we have a little experience with this, with COVID, of having to make some temporary adjustments, and some of them became permanent to how businesses operate and how other functions of the city operate. We will certainly bring those, obviously, to the council for your consideration and adoption. We also are working on supporting the region and the city in logistics, such as transportation, commerce, public safety, public health. We know as a committee that there are things that we cannot manage, we are not intended to manage. We're not going to figure out how to get people from the airport to Independence. That's not something that we can realistically take on, but we do feel like there are some supports that we can offer to the region, and we are offering to the region about things that would be appropriate in Independence that we could make available. Again, Councilmember Vaught is supporting that committee as is Sam to help us look at those city codes and ordinances and share some support to the region. Now, for the fun part, the events and celebrations. Again, we are focusing on our residents and our visitors. We want the people who live and work in Independence every day to be part of this celebration. We're not just throwing a party for somebody else. We're throwing a party for ourselves, and it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be part of something that is very historic and monumental, and we want people to have the opportunity to feel that they are a part of that. This has been the area where we've probably spent the most time talking about what we want to do or what we can do. We are, this committee has been extremely adept at saying, we need to put some parameters around what can we manage effectively and not try to take on things that we're not going to be successful in being able to manage. So, what we are focusing on is really expanding upon the events that we already do here in Independence in the summertime. Our calendar is chock-full of incredible things that we do in the summer or programs that we have through our Park Service, our community theater, our destination tourism sites, and how can we take those things that we are already doing and make them attractive to visitors and make them celebrations for our community? So, right now, what we're focused on is really working with the city and groups within the city to develop sort of an inventory of events and help to publicize them across the region, so that we can take the events that typically happen, maybe create some new ones, or take some events that maybe happen at a different time of year and do them during this time of year to really maximize the fun and the entertainment and the celebration that is going to occur, and then doing a really good job to support the city and those organizations in executing those events and publicizing them across the community. The Steering Committee, so all of us together as a group have some kind of areas that we work on all together. The final determination will always be made by the Steering Committee. These committees are just, there's no way that we're going to get this work done with all of these people one time a month, so we're, you know, the Steering Committees meet, and then they bring recommendation, or the, I'm sorry, subcommittees meet, and then they bring the recommendations to the Steering Committee. Licensing and watch parties is probably the biggest thing that we're discussing is, will we have the opportunity to purchase licensing? We believe we will. How much that's going to cost? We don't know. How many games we want to purchase that licensing for? We don't know, but we feel that that's a very, that's a big opportunity for us, and we have facilities here in Independence that we could host an event, those types of watch party events, not just for our community, but really for Eastern Jackson County. So, that's something that is a big desire on our list, to be able to potentially host that here in Independence. Headquarters, we feel that being, having accessible locations where people can come for information during the event is important, so we're looking at facilities that we, the city, has access to, where we can set up information hubs. They're not going to be manned 24/7 for six weeks. I mean, that's for sure, but we expect having materials available for visitors, you know, just general information about how do I get here, how do I do this, how do I do that? I say, it's like the Santa Calagon information booth. You know, it's like, this is where you go if you need to know what's going on, or a telephone number you can call. So, we're looking at locations for that. I'll leave it to your imagination, but we're thinking one here on the square in a very key visible spot, and one out in Eastern Independence, and we are in discussions with the Independence Center about potentially allowing us to have some space there, which would be a wonderful opportunity for people to come and have, and explore the Independence Center as well. Fan experience and promotion is really the job of all of us. All of these committees are sort of all engaged with that, and that's a big goal for our committee, is to make this a great experience for fans and a great experience for them, whether they live here all the time or they're coming from someplace else to visit, and really promoting Independence to the region and even in the national media, in international media. We certainly have things here in Independence that are unique to the nation and are unique to the globe, and we want to take this opportunity to share those stories. Finally, I think, something that we've talked about from the very beginning and continues to be a key focus of ours, is a lasting legacy for the Independence community. A generation from now, how are people going to know that this happened here? I use the example, when you go to a city that hosted the Olympics, you know that the Olympics happened in that city. There's a remnant there. There's something there that says that this event happened. So, we are, I've spoken a little bit with the city manager about this, just to start thinking about what might that be? We are going to be requesting funding from the city for some of these things. We entirely hope that that pro forma and expect that the city will be repaid for the investment that they make, that it makes, to put on some of these events and create these experiences. But, you know, based on these numbers that we're seeing, we expect there to be, you know, some significant revenue to the city and all of the sales tax funds that the city operates, and with that funding and with this experience and with this engagement that we're about to have, how are we going to make that evident in our city for generations to come? So, those are all of my prepared remarks, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Please proceed.
Mayor, we are, thank you very much for being willing to take on this responsibility. It's a big one. It's very visible for the city, so appreciation to you and to the other people who are serving on this committee. There's still much that is unknown and is slowly being revealed, both by FIFA and by the fact that we don't know who our teams are yet. I would imagine that this is a large regional effort, and can you just speak to the regionalism that this is going to require for coordination and how Independence fits into that?
Yes, it is a large regional effort. I don't know that our committee specifically is going to be directly involved with that. Sam and other people that the city manager has sort of designated this to are really going to be that link between us and the region. We, I think you can expect that Independence is going to be asked to participate in quite a few things. We're going to be given the opportunity to participate. I don't know what those are. I know that the Chamber of Commerce is, April membership meeting, the program is FIFA World Cup, so they have several people coming. Honestly, we know what you know. We don't know anything more than what you know, but I expect that the people that have been assigned to serve on some of these regional committees for the city will bring us that information, but no, I don't expect that our committee is going to be in direct communication.
I regularly get asked by people how they can volunteer or how they can help.
Yes.
So, is there a place for them to get information or to sign up to volunteer?
There will be, yes. We will, we do anticipate needing volunteers. As I said, we'd like to have these information hubs, and we will need volunteers if we're able to put, pull that together to help to man those and just be ambassadors for the city. Events that happen, we may need volunteers, so yes, we will have opportunities for volunteers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thanks for doing this and to the committee. So, do you guys, my understanding is that you're building a website?
We, yes.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, we are at the very beginning stages of that. We are working with your city communications staff, but we don't want to host that on the city website, so we, the Communications Committee is really deep in the weeds, putting that together, just, you know, as another resource that can link to the city site and to the city social media, but yeah, we do plan to develop an independent website to share this information.
And where, will there be opportunities for local businesses to do some sponsorship things?
Yes. We, we're, I'm not ready to announce what those are tonight, but we are working on several different, several different things that would allow, that we're going to need sponsors for, quite frankly. I mean, that we want to give those businesses the opportunity to promote themselves to the community and to the visitors, but, you know, to offset costs, we would be looking for sponsorship for various things as well, yeah.
And then one more question, which may be Sam. My guess is that the Kansas City FIFA Committee is going to reach out to us regarding our first responders. Is that correct? And some...
There's been discussion about that as it pertains to mutual aid and what that looks like during this time, especially on the first responders, seeing as the majority of individuals that would be called upon would be doing so on off-shifts. So, when they're not actually serving here, they would be serving in another location. So, that's definitely something that's on the regional table of conversation as to how do we, how do we maneuver that?
Right, because there'll be some funding needs with that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Please proceed.
Just again, thank you for your efforts and all those of your committee. The thought I had was, as we're sitting here, and this may be really for Zach, is, you know, we're in the process of putting together the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and so as that comes online, and that may be another resource that hopefully will be real beneficial to you, so it'd be important, you know, for the city to tie that in with you guys, what you're doing.
Yeah, we're very eager to, you know, interact with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. When I was meeting with the chamber today, that came up, and without knowing who it is and what its function is, it's kind of hard to, you know, think about how that would interact, but certainly, they're going to be the most successful person ever because the hotel rooms will already be full. So, they will get a bonus their first year, yeah. But we're very eager to see how that proceeds, and I know it's coming this summer or late spring, early summer, so yes, as soon as that's all developed and the individuals are hired, we're very eager to bring them on board.
Thank you. Anyone else other further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
She beat you to it, councilmember, so...
I'll defer.
I just, I just want to thank them. Sam, Mayor Weir, your leadership for this committee has been awesome. This has been a challenge. Sometimes we felt like a hamster on a wheel, you know, not getting any traction, but I think in the last few meetings, Sam has gone regionally and brought back information as it trickles into us. Eileen has brought, she organized the meetings, she got those subcommittees figured out and organized. The DIES put together an excellent committee. I don't think it could have been better people so far, you know, for what we have to do. And they are enthusiastic, they show up to the meetings, they come with thoughtful conversation. It's, I think we're going to have a great event for our community, so I just wanted to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Likewise, I'll echo the, thank you for all the work you're putting on here, and Councilwoman Vaught, thank you for heading this, this committee and this task. What a great opportunity to showcase Independence, so it's pretty exciting to be able to pull this together, and from talking to some of my other peers around the metro and other folks that I know, it sounds like we're ahead of the game quite a bit on, on what we're trying to do to make this as seamless and successful as possible. As Donald Runfield once said, there's plenty of known, unknowns, so we'll get that information when it comes available, but thank you, and we'll look forward to hearing what's coming next.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else other for comments, questions? Okay. Mayor, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, if I'm correct, Mr. City Manager, the next set is Chapter 3 Code Changes: Reckless Owners and Commercial Breeding. This is sponsored, even though it wasn't noticed up this way, by Councilmember Fears and Councilmember Wiley, if I'm correct?
You are, sir.
And so we could have a public comment if anyone wanted to come forward. And I will open up the floor to any comments, I don't see anyone here for that, so with that being said, but if anybody runs in the door, I'll let them have access while this item is still open. With that being said, Mr. City Manager, I'll let you frame this up and we'll move forward.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council well knows, been a lot of work by this council in recent years to bring additional reforms and improvements to the city's animal control code, all things pet ownership, and the council, through the leadership of Councilmember Fears and Wiley, asked for some additional considerations, particularly in light of what some of our peer cities have done. So city staff have worked to be responsive to that. Prior to this ordinance being introduced for council consideration, though, we wanted to review what the proposed changes would be. So tonight, our Director of Health and Animal Services, Christina Heinem, is here to overview that with you.
Thank you, please proceed.
Good evening. My name's Christina Heinem, I'm the Health and Animal Services Director for the City of Independence. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Zach shared, I'm here to briefly go over some potential changes to Chapter 3. Those include, first, a reckless owner section. So a reckless owner, by this definition, would be nine violations of any portion of the animal code in a 24-month period, or three violations specifically of the portion of the animal control code that has to do with abuse or neglect. Now I know there were a lot of questions as we went through, why would it be nine violations? That seems like so many in a 24-month period. What we have to remember is that when our animal control officers go out and they have a case, they often are writing multiple tickets on that case. So they're writing a ticket for the animal running at large, they're writing a ticket for the animal not having up-to-date rabies, and they're writing a ticket for something else. And that's for each and every single animal, so that quickly adds up. We wanted to be cognizant of that, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't moving directly to the reckless owner on the very first case that somebody had coming forward. The result, if someone is found to be a reckless owner, if they have these nine violations or the three violations for abuse or neglect, they would need to surrender all of their owned animals to the shelter, and if the judge found them guilty, those animals would need to be essentially permanently surrendered to the shelter, and they would not be able to own additional animals for a 24-month period after that. The changes also address commercial breeding and hobby breeding. It makes it very clear, we don't have, to our knowledge, any commercial breeders at this time, and I'm knocking on wood, in the City of Independence, but we want to make sure that we're very clear that that is not something that we are looking to have here within the city, and that any hobby or show breeders, as defined in the chapter, will need to get a license for breeding. This would limit the number of litters they can have, this would ensure that those animals are microchipped, so we can track them, that they're being vaccinated, that they're not being given away too early, and that those animals that are being bred are being cared for as they're being bred. And then, a change that would also go along with this, is we were looking at changing the age for how we calculate the number of pets. Currently, there's a limit of four adult animals, any combination of dogs or cats, for a home. But we consider that any animal that's six months or older, we've ran into a couple of cases where, because of the shortened gestation period, there have been, you know, what started out as four animals has quickly became 20 animals within that six-month period, and having to wait those six months before animal control can address the situation and step in and try to find a solution was becoming problematic. So we are looking to lower that number to three months of age before those animals start counting. So we're looking that if there's a litter that comes in, people need to be moving quickly to try to find homes, and that way we can also help with spay, neuter, or any of those things that they might need, and be able to step in a little earlier. Those are the changes, and I'm more than willing to go into any detail you guys need. Answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone any questions? Please proceed.
I, I just want to be sure I understand. So what we're saying is that at three months, you're considered an adult animal.
We wouldn't consider them an adult, but we would count that towards the number of owned animals that they're allowed, so it would be towards that four animal limit at three months of age.
So, just, so I can make sure I get it? I have a mom and dad cat, they have a litter of six. At three months, now all six of those count toward the total number?
Yes, so now with your mom and dad cat and the six kittens, there would be eight animals that now count towards that limit, so four of those animals would need to be rehomed.
Okay. And how do you notify hobby breeders? I know that there are certainly some, I see their posts, and so I'm just, how do we communicate to them?
So we're going to have to work with our communications team closely to make sure that not only are we making them aware of this council session and upcoming changes, possible changes to the code, but through our Facebook page, through press releases, through interviews that, you know, the communications team may have, we'll do everything we can without knowing all of them, although we know some, I'm sure that there are quite a few that we don't know. So we would need to rely on the communications team to get that word out.
So, you know, no neighbor wants to be the one who rats out their next-door neighbor for breeding 10,000 cats in their basement. Would they be able to let animal control know so that a letter could be directed to the hobby breeders so they find out how they can be compliant without them getting in trouble?
So, we do have a method, and if that's the direction the council would like to go right now, when it comes to barking dogs or an animal running under strain, but no one's willing to be the witness for it, we weren't able to catch it. In those times when the witness is unwilling to go to court initially, we do have letters that we send out.
Okay.
And that is a totally normal process where we advise, hey, someone has contacted us, they are making this allegation, here's some tips and tricks, and here's the portion of the code where it discusses this. If you have questions, please reach out to us, we're more than willing to help.
And is there a grace period from when this is enacted to when people have to figure out their plan?
So, that would be up to the council, we can make a change.
Okay.
Normally, there is a 10-day period, I'm looking over at our lawyer.
Would be effective immediately.
Okay, it would be effective immediately. So, right now, that would be end of April or mid-April that it would become effective. We have the ability to delay that, we also have the ability, there are very few cases where we go out and immediately are writing tickets, immediately trying to seize animals. We always try for that voluntary compliance first before tickets are written. If nothing else, sometimes court just takes a long time, so we would much rather get that voluntary compliance immediately. So if we have the opportunity to work with people, we always go that route first.
Could I request that we look at three months before that becomes effective, just so that we can do a really good job of blanketing with communication? Because we want this to be effective and not frustrating, especially if somebody has a pregnant animal and they're, they have made plans for that pregnant animal, so if we could at least take a look at that, that would be wonderful.
Of course.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else?
Sorry, yes, thank you.
I knew you would have questions, that's why I paused.
Thank you for doing this, and, I mean, these are, these are significant changes, and I think, I think they're important. I'm one of those animal welfare people who, who have seen in the last several years this animal crisis, and it's pretty alarming, and I think the way the rest of, you know, people who aren't in animal welfare see it, because there's more strays, and when there's more strays, it becomes a safety issue, dogs that are running around that we don't know. So, not only is this important, because we want people to be responsible owners and we don't want, you know, animals neglected and dismembered cruelty, but we also want to keep people safe. And so I think this will help us accomplish both things. I know this is more work for the animal control officers. And I, I thank them every time I see them because they have really difficult jobs, whenever, I mean, everyone's always mad at them, but, but they're, they know the animals in this town, they're really good at that. They know, they know what's going on when it comes to that in Independence, and they do a really good job. So, thank you.
No, this is actually a very timely piece. Just right before I was scheduled to come here, we had six puppies come in that were found in a Rubbermaid container at one of our parks, so I had to quickly help intake those animals. This morning, we had 107 dogs on site, we have 99 kennels, and then we brought in those six additional puppies. We are, we are bursting at the seams, we need good solutions and ways to help our community figure that out, because we know we're not in this alone, it can't just be the shelter that does this, it has to be a community effort.
And one more thing, we've talked about this before, how being a responsible pet owner means spaying and neutering your dogs, and how important it is to, to go into pet ownership knowing that that's something that needs to get done. Not only does it make them live longer, it keeps them from roaming, it keeps them from being door darters, and it keeps them from, from being aggressive.
Yes.
And so, so you and I have talked a lot about what, what we can do to, to offer discounted spay-neuter, free spay-neuter, and I know you, you and your staff have worked really hard on that, and we, we have to keep making sure people understand that it's really, it's a really important part of pet ownership.
Yes.
Thank you. And council member, I thought for a moment there that this was Bob Barker and The Price is Right, so, no, that was, it was outstanding, well done. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Just briefly, thank you for your work on this, I know we asked you to work on this, and so I appreciate it. I, I just want to say that, you know, I heard the comments about the incredible need to communicate this well. I think Councilmember McCannellis's suggestion of waiting three months for effective date is a good one, something to that effect, whether it's three months is the right number, I don't know, because I don't know anything about gestation periods of animals or anything of that nature, but, but I, I think, I, you know, I'm not in, opposed to any kind of delay effective date on this, so whatever makes sense, I think is, is good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? Well, you know I come out to the shelter quite a bit, and you keep a great job there, and, and let's continue to get those dogs spayed and neutered and get them adopted, so find them home.
Agreed. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager, I will let you tee the next one up on the geo-bond questions, summer review, things like that, there we go.
I'll do you one better, Mayor, I'll give you a presentation.
Even better.
Well, for those that don't know, my name is Zach Walker, and I'm the city manager for the City of Independence, and since the council adopted an ordinance in December calling for a general obligation bond election this April, over the last five study sessions, we have had presentations from department directors about each aspect of the questions and the issues, and tonight, we want to use this forum, as this is the last study session that we'll have before the April 8th vote, to have one additional overview of the questions that are being presented, but also, over the course of the more than 30 presentations that we have collectively given as a council and a staff, the questions that we've heard from folks, I'm trying to incorporate as many of those in here to address some of those more frequently asked questions, and hopefully give everybody one last final understanding of what is being contemplated on April the 8th. So as a reminder, as I said, in December of 2024, the city council voted for the first time in our city's history to put a general obligation bond question before the community. If you live in this community, you voted on levy increases for the library, you have voted on geo-bond issues for the school districts, whether you live in Blue Springs, Fort Osage, or Independence School District, but you have never had the opportunity to vote on a general obligation bond issue for the City of Independence. We've never even made it this far, so this in and of itself is a historic moment, but obviously, we, we brought this not just to have the chance to vote, but to hopefully have the chance to make the improvements contemplated therein. So just as a reminder for everyone, so we have a common operating knowledge, a general obligation bond, or commonly known as a GO bond, is a financing tool authorized by the Missouri State Constitution and Missouri State statutes. It allows a city to borrow money to make capital improvements. We cannot use these funds to go hire staff, we can't use these funds to pay for existing staff or any of our day-to-day operating expenses, we can only use these funds to pay for capital improvements, capital maintenance items in the city. These are very attractive in the bond market because they are secured by the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city. That is how these taxes are, these bonds are repaid, through voter approval of a debt levy that's repaid then through personal property tax. These bonds have to be paid off within the 20-year period of the time that they are issued, and as we'll see later tonight, there are different times that these bonds get issued, but once a bond is issued, you have 20 years maximum to repay that debt. That fiscal impact, as I just said, is phased in over time, so the amount that is approved by the voters won't necessarily be fully issued by the city all at once, we'll issue debt commensurate with when we're approaching or implementing a project, so this tax impact that we discussed tonight won't hit you instantaneously, this is something that will be phased in and then phased out over time as repayment is, is made. This is a very common financing tool used by cities in Missouri, and particularly the cities that surround the Independence. So much so that I put together this chart that shows the cities around us, every city has a maximum debt levy that they can utilize. If you compare the cities that generally are here in eastern Jackson County or this eastern side of the metropolitan area, every one of those cities except Independence has some portion of general obligation debt on their books today. This is reflective of each of these municipalities' last annual comprehensive financial report, so this is not necessarily the amount that they've ever approved, but it's the amount of debt they currently have on their books, and what you'll see is, when you average out these municipalities, the current debt that's on their books for general obligation debt is about 21%, so a little more than one-fifth. Independence, again, zero, because we've never even voted on one of these. And one of the most tangible ways I can show you the impact that this has, that the way these communities are investing in themselves versus Independence with no general obligation bond debt, is in population. Think we've all heard the question before, why don't we look like fill-in-the-blank City? Well, if you look at the last three decennial census that have been conducted, almost every city on this chart has double-digit population growth, except for the City of Independence. In fact, the Census Bureau estimates that since 2020 to 2023, we've actually here in Independence declined a little bit in population, the only city of these on the chart that have had, had that outcome. So, why don't we look like these other cities? Well, that can be a very complicated answer, but one thing I know for sure, these cities are making these capital investments in themselves, making themselves ripe and attractive and able to accommodate growth in the business and commercial and residential sectors. We have not made that kind of investment, and this is one of the most prominent places that impact shows up. The road to April 8th, to Election Day, is one that has been very methodical, deliberate, and transparent. For me, this really starts in 2016, right after we had a citizen satisfaction survey that illustrated some community frustration with maintenance and upkeep of city assets. The council at that time asked me, help us start to figure out how we solve this issue that our residents are pointing out. As staff, we felt like the best way to go about that was to begin to quantify, well, what is the nature of the problem? So we did a deferred maintenance report, that means needs that we have, but we maintenance report. That means needs that we have, but we don't have any money to address those needs. And in 2016, that was a billion dollars of deferred maintenance. So every strategic plan that we have had since 2017, and we have had four of those, every council has adopted a strategic plan with some variation of bringing a general obligation bond question to the community to make these kind of improvements. There was also a group known as the Downtown Redevelopment Coordinating Committee that was a 12-member citizen committee that was asked to look at 16 different redevelopment plans in kind of Northwest Independence area, and they boiled those down into one redevelopment plan. And while they looked at a lot of different financing strategies, like grants and other community improvement districts and that, they also recommended a general obligation bond to start to address some of these issues in our downtown area. Every citizen survey that we've done, 2016, 18, and 23, have consistently said, maintain city streets, maintain and improve public safety, and maintain our historic sites are three of the top priorities that this community has had. So this council really picked that conversation up aggressively this last fall, when you adopted a resolution where each of you appointed three citizens to serve on that committee. And that ranged from Community Services League President and CEO Doug Cowan, Independent School District Superintendent Dr. Dale Hurl, to just everyday citizens across this community. That group got together five different times. They heard presentations from city staff about the various needs in each of their departments. They went and personally toured a lot of these dilapidated assets, and came together to make a recommendation to this council. In November, the chairman of that committee, CSL President Doug Cowan, stood here and made that committee's recommendation to you. And this council got together one last time in November and contemplated those recommendations, and then, of course, adopted the ordinance calling for the election. But then went a step further at your first meeting in January, adopting a resolution that added even more specificity beyond what the generalized nature of the ballot questions are, so that any citizen that wants to know where would these dollars go, that was itemized out in that resolution. That led to three different questions that will be voted on on April 8th. A public safety question for $130 million, a infrastructure question for $55 million, and a question dealing with our historic sites and our athletic complex for $12 million. These questions were organized on the advice of the city's legal council to be in conformance with state statute. The language is in conformance with state statute, but that's why you see these questions like this. This is what our council has told us we need to do to be in keeping with state law. So I'm going to review each of these questions now in a little more detail. The first question, public safety, involves three different aspects. You vote on one question, but here are the three things that come with that question. $123 million for a new justice center, $4 million to address the current police station here on the square, and $3 million for our animal shelter. Our current police station was built in 1972, and for those that don't know, it sits at the corner of Truman and Nolan Roads on the northeast corner of the Independence Square. Can really summarize the challenge with that building into two main categories: health and safety issues and inadequate space issues. When I talk about health and safety issues, we could talk about a lot of things. We could talk about intermittent operations of the elevator, an issue with the Americans with Disability Act. We could talk about water infiltration, a building that was built on a natural spring, and since the day it opened, men and women who serve in that department tell you it's had water infiltration issues. We all probably have our favorite story, and I'll share mine with you. Mine happened about a month ago. The toilet, the men's urinal here that's on the right, decided it would be fun to pretend like it was old faithful, and began to emit its contents all over the second floor of the police headquarters. And the contents of that urinal traveled down the hallway in a working office environment and into one of the conference rooms on the second floor of the police department. That is the kind of environment that the men and women that protect us every day are working in inside of this police station. Now, we've not just, you know, tried to pretend like nothing's happening. For the last five years that we have our actual accounted-for data, we have spent almost $1.3 million trying to address these maintenance issues, make certain repairs, et cetera. So on average, that's about $225,000 per year of unbudgeted expenses that we are putting into that building trying to address these leaks, plumbing issues, electrical issues, et cetera. The bond issue isn't just addressing the police station, though. We have two other facilities that our police department use that were not purpose-built. They are second-hand facilities. Right down the road from City Hall here is a building that we call the Penniston Building. That's because it used to be operated by a construction company, the Penniston Construction Company. That is where our motorcycle unit is at, our accident investigation unit, and our bomb and SWAT units. You can see in this picture, we've had a very wet winter, a lot of snow, a lot of rain. Not too long ago, the erosion from the hillside at this Penniston Building forced a Jersey barrier to fall off where it was resting and landed on one of these vehicles. That might not seem like a big deal, but this car isn't just here because we're storing it. This car is here because it was involved in, in an issue that our police department is investigating. So this is damage to evidence that was in our possession. This bond issue would also address our canine unit. Some of you may recall that the city's previous animal shelter was out on Vista Drive. We didn't leave that animal shelter because we just felt like it, or we had extra cash sitting around. That was a building that had some serious space and sanitation issues in it as well. Now, canine officers aren't in that building all of the time, but again, it's not purpose-built, and it's not big enough, or frankly, safe enough for the folks and the animals that are in that facility. The other issue then is the space issues inside of this building. As you can imagine, policing has changed a lot since 1972. It's a lot more equipment-heavy business than it used to be. So we have a lot of computers and cameras and all sorts of radios, things of that nature coming in, and we just put this stuff, frankly, where we can find room. The picture on the left there is actually one of our deputy chief's offices where we are storing mobile data terminals before those can be installed. The picture on the right is our property and evidence room. May not know this, but evidence has to be kept forever, you know, in case there's a break in a case or somebody wants to appeal. New cases are coming in all the time, and again, we're at capacity. So you can see what the property and evidence room looks like there with, with that much evidence stored in one confined space. To sort of put a number to this, I went and looked at the police stations around us. Some of you probably know Kansas City Police Department works off a regional policing model, so they've got stations, patrol stations throughout the city, so that's why you see more of those here. But the average station around us was built in 2015. Ours, again, opened in 73, built in 72, opened in 73. What I think is really important to look at is the square footage and the number of personnel that are inside of that building. When you make the average comparison, these other departments have one employee for every 628 square feet, where our department has one for every 377. So almost 50% the size of these other departments around us. And I did have somebody at a presentation last week mention, well, you didn't put the police headquarters in Kansas City on here. I will say that, yes, the downtown Kansas City Police Department was built in 1938. In 2014, it underwent a $40 million renovation to take it down to the studs and to add space in it to where that is now a 115,000-square-foot building. So even that property, the historic downtown Kansas City Police Headquarters, has also had millions of dollars of renovation within this last decade. We have studied and studied and studied this issue to make sure that this is the most economical and efficient solution. 2015 study looked at building a new building versus trying to address the facility issues at the current police station, and found that the cost of repairing the existing building and trying to add some additional space in the limited footprint they have was about $29.3 million, whereas a new facility was $29 million. We validated that, again, in a 2018 study. You can see some of the benefits that were listed, along with the recommendation of relocating to a new site, but improving efficiency by having all of the personnel on a centralized campus, improved highway access is going to help with our response times. This will help with recruiting. Again, if you think of an average building in 2015, folks walk in and say, wow. They walk in our building and say, wow. The court's safety and efficiency right now, folks in detention are brought through a parking lot into this council chambers for municipal court. There's a lot of opportunity for failure there with safety, both for the person being brought to court as well as the general public. One of the recommendations that was made in that 2018 report was, as we relocate to a site further east, to make a footprint on the Independence Square. And the picture you see here is the substation that opened last month on Lexington across from Cafe Verona. So again, we are following the recommendations of the consultants that provided these studies for us. We have tried to find other ways to finance this before we brought a general obligation bond idea forward. The most recent strategy that we pursued was forming a public safety community improvement district. This thing was massive. It would have started at 291 and 24 Highway, where there's a McDonald's, jogged down south on 291 to pick up that kind of large commercial area anchored by a price chopper, jogged back to the west on Lee Summit Road, on 23rd Street, pardon me, and then dropped south on Lee Summit Road to I-70, where Home Depot and Cracker Barrel are at. There's a lot of reasons that, that idea didn't go forward, but my point being, that was the size of the geographic space that was needed to raise revenues to pay for a police station expansion in $2,018. So we have turned over every couch cushion we can. We are coming with this GeoBond idea as a measure of last resort. So now let's talk about what the solutions look like. Well, today, at the 23rd Street and RD Myes Road, the current Independence Utility Center site. Those employees will be moving to the new Independence Municipal Commons Building, which will allow, the picture on the screen here, the red square, that will be renovated for a lot of the police functions that are currently housed inside of the current headquarters. What we will add will be a new municipal court, a new detention unit, a new firing range with very modern amenities that aren't possible in the limited antiquated space in our current firing range. Space for our SWAT team, our bomb squad, our motorcycle unit, our accident investigation unit, all on a consolidated campus. One thing I want to address before I show you some of the renderings, questions out there have been about safety, particularly in proximity to Blackburn Elementary School. If you look at this picture, access to municipal court will be controlled from people coming off of 23rd Street into the municipal court building, and then, of course, exiting that same way they came in. Detention will be below grade, so underground. There'll be a controlled elevator where only folks who are in detention and the officer's bringing them up to court, so it won't be mixed with the general population. Everything you see to the south of this, though, these are non-public access areas. So our firing range, our bomb squad, our motorcycle unit, et cetera. A lot of this area is going to be fenced off to where only authorized personnel, not general public, are going to be allowed to traverse south back here. The entire campus itself will be secured. So again, we feel very confident that any fears about co-mingling with the elementary school aren't, aren't going to be an issue based on the safety and security designs of this building. So to bring some of those visuals into play, in the background of this picture is the existing utility center building that will become new police headquarters. And then running from the east to the west will be the new municipal court, and then, of course, down below, the detention unit. And then in this picture, while you can't see those other ancillary specialized unit buildings, this sort of gives you a looking from the north to the south view of, of what this campus will look like and the layout of it. In its place will be $4 million to bring down the current police headquarters building and make this site shovel-ready for future development. As the council knows, most of the employees in the current city hall will also be moving to that Municipal Commons Building, and we have the funding as part of that project to address the city hall demolition as well. With the removal of the police headquarters building, we are opening up about 16 acres of prime land at a hard corner in a downtown, which is frankly quite unheard of. This will make this area site and shovel-ready for future development. We are exploring a lot of different exciting ideas right now, a lot of ideas on the table. But the point is, having these buildings out of the way and new infrastructure in its place makes this area very attractive for us to market, to other users that will provide more of an economic benefit to the small business owners on the Independence Square. And then the final part of this question is $3 million toward the animal shelter. The animal shelter, which is located on 78 Highway close to the community college, is a unique arrangement. It is a building owned by Jackson County, but the land is owned by Independence. And we operate the shelter in an agreement with the county. This is a building, as I said, being operated by the city, does not have any county employees on it. And as one might suspect, the prioritization for the county of maintaining a building without some of their, without any of their employees in it is very low. Oftentimes, there are repairs that we, as a city, need to make, not because we want to, but because these are health and safety issues that need to be made to keep the shelter open under state law. And then we invoice the county for those. And that does get repaid, though, you know, not always as fast as we would like, but it does get repaid. We just think that's a very wonky, awkward, inefficient, risky relationship. So with these funds, this money would allow us to pay off the debt on that building and put that building into the city's control. These are conversations that would need to be finalized with the county about the condition of the building, but right now, we can't even have that conversation because, as you might imagine, no one's going to take you serious when you don't have money in hand. With the approval of this question, we would have that money. We're able to have those conversations with the county. I feel very good, based on the conversations I have had with my peers at the county about this, but they are very adamant that we will formalize an agreement with you once we, once we have that money in hand. If this question weren't, were to pass, but the county decided for whatever reason they don't want to make that arrangement, then we're actually no worse off than we are standing here tonight. The city would not draw down these funds, and this is not debt we would owe, and this is not money that would then be spread out on a taxpayer's bill for repayment. So really, I view it as a win-win. Either we're able to finalize that agreement, or we're not any more out of hand than we are today. Okay, question two is the infrastructure-related question. The first part of that is $30 million for street reconstruction and overlay. Right now, we have $430 million of deferred maintenance, which is, again, projects that we don't have any funding for. We have 1,200 lane miles that we maintain as a city. Of the approximately $11 to $12 million that comes in annually for the street sales tax, about $4.75 million of that is allocated for street maintenance. That's because other funds are used for things like acquiring salt for snow removal, acquiring sand for snow removal. The grants that we get at this, from the federal or state government that require a 20% match, they come from here. The debt service for the 20 new snowplows that we bought are paid out of here. So $4.75 million is set aside in the current fund for street maintenance. If we could just pause time, and all the streets would stay in their current condition and nothing would get worse, at this rate, 4.75 million into 430 million of need, it would take us 91 years to get all of those streets up to where they need to be. We know that's not the case, though. We live in the Midwest, streets deteriorate, so we are falling further behind every year. This approval of this question would give us $6 million per year for each of the next five years to help accelerate the rate at which we're making maintenance repairs to the streets in this city and really help us get caught up in a much more aggressive manner and allow us to use our maintenance funds more for, our street sales tax monies more for maintenance and not trying to catch up so much on these major repairs. Okay, $10 million of this question would go towards sidewalks. We met with the superintendents of Independence and Forto Sage and asked them, if we were to construct sidewalks to schools in your districts, what would be your priorities? And Independence identified five schools in their district, and Forto Sage identified two of those. With this money, we would be able to build sidewalk connectivity. Our estimate is within a mile radius to each of these seven elementary schools. Now, one of the questions that we heard, I believe just yesterday, was, well, why doesn't the school district build these sidewalks? Well, like us, the school district can only make repairs with their money to properties or facilities that they own. What we're talking about here is sidewalks that extend beyond the campus property and into the neighborhoods so that children have sidewalks to walk on to those schools. This is either going to repair sidewalks that have fallen into this repair or add sidewalks where they don't exist. Perhaps one of the best examples of that is the Castle Park Elementary School in southwest Independence. There's a lot of narrow streets through there that don't have sidewalks and a lot of children that walk along the shoulder of the road there. This will improve the safety for both the pedestrians and those children walking to school by getting them off the side of that road and onto a sidewalk as they're coming to and from the schools. The final part of this question is $15 million for bridges. As we sit here today, five and a half bridges in your city are closed. I say and a half because the bridge at Chrisler Avenue that triangulates with Winter and Lexington had a lane of traffic closed about a month ago. So that leaves seven and a half bridges that if we don't address within at least the next seven years, we, as a city, know they're deteriorating a rate that we're going to have to close those. This 15 million would allow us to repair or replace all 13 of those bridges. Now, right now, again, going back to the street improvement sales tax, we set aside $150,000 a year, mostly to do some redecking or patching on bridges across town. So if we could keep any bridge from deteriorating further, that'd be 100 years before we were able to get just these 13 bridges caught up. Again, that's not reality. These other bridges are deteriorating as time goes on, so 15 million is going to allow us to get all 13 of these bridges cycled through. I'm not going to read this, but what I want people to take away from this slide is, these are the projects that we know we'll address with this bond money. These are the current project estimates that we have for these projects. This information, in addition to being on this slide, is out on our website. It was shared by Ms. Lisa Reynolds in the last study session presentation to you, so anybody who wants to take a deeper dive on this, this information's available to you. We've heard a lot from folks on our speaking tour about, well, I already pay a street sales tax, what's happened to that? Well, that tax approved in 2002 and went into effect in 2004. Since that time, there's been several factors that have diminished the spending power of that fund. Inflation, cost of materials, cost of labor, both have gone up, yet we still collect a half-cent sales tax, so the expenditures have increased at a rate faster than what revenue has been able to keep up with. Construction costs, again, asphalt, concrete, steel, all things that have increased in price, all things that if you're tracking the news right now will probably continue to increase in price. Declining real revenue growth. People aren't spending always at the same, you know, we've been through a prolonged inflationary period. These revenue funds, particularly sales taxes, are highly susceptible to changes in the market. We aren't collecting revenue growth at the rate that we once did. The shifts in consumer spending, that refers to the rise of online sales tax, and of course, if you know, Independence approved its use tax, which is great, but there are requirements that have to be satisfied before those sales tax funds can flow to their respective funds. We have to account for 30 new police officers and a minimum amount of about $875,000 for our animal shelter before each of these sales tax collect their pro-rata share, so they don't get the direct revenue that they once did through brick-and-mortar establishments. These deferred maintenance costs continue to increase, and then, of course, our city has continued to grow. We've added assets like the Little Blue Parkway. Yes, I've heard from all of you in the city that the Little Blue Parkway is in terrible condition, but those are examples of roads that we've added to the network since 2002, but we've not necessarily added to the revenue stream to maintain those. So the final question, question three, again, historic sites in our athletic complex. $7 million of this question would go to the Truman Memorial Building, the Vale Mansion, and the Bingham Wagner Estate. These are three facilities in particular that are very unique to our identity in Independence. These are facilities that draw people from across the region and the state and the country. They are also just part of our community fabric, kind of the way we mark time, the annual strawberry festival at the Vale, the craft festival each fall at the Bingham Wagner, the various events, you know, family events, birthdays, weddings, et cetera, at the Truman Memorial Building. If we want to continue to have these assets in our community for the next generation to enjoy, we've got to invest in them. If you know old buildings, you know old homes, they are costly, a lot of maintenance and repairs. These funds will help ensure the survivability of these assets for the next generation to enjoy. And then the final part of this question and the final project in the bond is $5 million for the athletic complex. This site sits on 291 and Salisbury Road. It opened in the mid-2000s. It's a wonderful facility, 165 acre with all manner of sport offerings, soccer, baseball, softball, and football, even has an amphitheater and walking trails out there. Its challenge is it has not had significant reinvestment since those mid-2000s. We believe that this is a critical investment in our city because of the rise in the youth sports market. If any of you have children or grandchildren or know somebody that does, you know that they travel to soccer games, baseball, softball games, et cetera. We believe with this highway access and the sheer size of this complex, there's no reason Independence cannot be competitive in this market and having people stay in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, shopping in our stores, paying sales tax, that gives us the revenue we need to provide basic services for our citizens. I was a parent that did this just this last weekend and had lunch, dinner, and killed time at a store in Johnson County, and I'm sick of giving Johnson County money. They've got plenty of it. I'm ready to have those folks come and see us and spend money in our community so that we can give services to our town. So how much will this cost? Well, we are showing this in terms of per $100,000 of value in your home. If all three questions were approved and at the full amount, so all the projects have been completed, this would be $156.40 or about $13 per month. I'm going to give you a little more detail on that in just a moment. But an important caveat before I go on, if you are a senior, age 62, and you applied for the Jackson County Property Tax Credit, you will not pay for these projects. So the only way I know to directly say this is, you can vote for all three questions, enjoy the benefit of all three questions, and not pay the tax liability for these three questions. We have made our financial estimate that I showed you on the last slide, based on data from the county about the number of taxpayers who are exempt, so we don't expect a massive boon in that because of the exemption to the seniors who qualified. We've accounted for that, but I cannot stress enough that these qualifying seniors will not pay for this tax increase. So I want to give a little more detail to this question. Councilmember Vought and I were in a garage, which sounds really weird when I say it out loud, but we were in a neighbor's garage yesterday for a homeowners' association meeting, and somebody was, you know, suggested, could you please give the granular breakdown of how these questions work? So if all three questions were approved, you can see question one would be 54 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. Question two is 23 cents, and question three is 5 cents. So that means at full implementation with all three projects approved, 82 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And you can go left to right on the chart here and see for every $100,000 of residential assessed valuation what your, the annual tax liability would be. So to drill down a little further, no one can ever say we weren't transparent here. Here's my house. My house, when I go to the county website, has a total market value of $211,090. That is not what Zillow says my home is worth, that's not what my realtor says my home is worth, that's not what I tell my neighbor I think my home is worth. That is what the county on their website says my home is worth. That's the key that everybody needs to look at. In state law, residential property is assessed at 19%. So when you take 19% times my home's value, I have an assessed value of $40,107. So at 82 cents per $100 of assessed valuation, my annual cost will be $328.88. But again, another question we get is, well, will that 328 hit all at once? No. This is an example only, okay, I want to stress that enough, example only of what a phase-in could look like. If we started work on the Justice Center later this year, and then we completed work in '26, and I'm not going to go all the way through this, but you can see when we estimate when different projects would be completed. Year one, an additional 11 cents on your tax bill. Year two, an additional 47 cents, which gets you to 48, all the way up through about a six-year phase-in. Now, this is what I think is the most aggressive, okay? It could maybe take a little longer. There could be delays of some kind, there could be material shortage and other supply chain disruption, but if it took six, if with this held true, it would take six years to get all the way up to where your full 82 cents implementation is at, which means then between 2045 and 2051 is when those bonds would start to wind down based on the 20-year payback. So I just want to stress that again, not all 82 cents hits all at once. It will take us time to deliver all of these projects to the community. I think a frequent question you have all heard when we've been out visiting with different groups is, well, what if this doesn't pass? What if, what if we continue to wait? And the question can be answered very simply. These problems will not go away, but the cost will continue to increase. Our streets aren't going to magically heal themselves and get smooth, our bridges aren't going to regrow where holes have opened up in them, the police station's not going to pop up like a mushroom into a bigger building. These are problems that will only get solved with new funding. We know, based on data, that the cost of doing projects is going up. The Department of Labor, the federal Department of Labor, says that non-residential buildings, so our historic sites and our Justice Center, the 30-year average per year increase is 4.7%. So every year we wait, these projects get almost 5% more expensive over the last 30 years. 2022 alone, we saw an almost 13% increase. Non-building infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, bridges, all of that, have gone up by almost 4% per year over the last 30 years. So to just drive that home graphically, you can see the massive disruption that we saw in the market post-COVID with the supply chain disruption, where cost, that 2022 increase of 13%. Now, there's been some easing of late with a return to normalcy in supply chain, but again, I think many of you have kept up with national news and conversations about what's happening in the market and potential conversations around tariffs, so we believe that these costs will only continue to increase. The contractors, the engineers, and construction managers who've been working with us to prepare these projects have told us that the annual increase that they are forecasting is about 6% per year. So take your number, four to 6%, but what we know, every year we wait, these projects will only be more expensive, but the need is not going away. I know it's very important in this community, and it should be, but to ensure that these dollars are spent the way they are promised to be. There are three different ways right now that the council has identified for oversight of these funds. One is to have quarterly reports made to the council's Audit and Finance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Fears, to bring in information about how much money has been borrowed, what projects have been funded, and what are the status of those projects. Then that report would be made annually to this council in a public meeting with the reports, of course, made available. And finally, we think it's wise to report to the various sales tax committees, like the street sales tax committee is an example, to show them how much was done in street maintenance with sales tax, how much in bond dollars, and then the volume that was completed so that they can get an idea of the totality of the impact. So right now, three different ways, three different sets of oversight groups to ensure appropriate spending of those funds. So as I close out, again, three questions on the ballot. This is not a simple majority. This is a 57% voter approval that is mandated by state law, so even if we were to see 53, 55% approval on April 8th, those questions would not have passed. They must attain a minimum 57% approval. Election Day is April 8th, but as a courtesy, I will remind folks that beginning tomorrow, under Missouri law, no excuse absentee voting begins, so you can go to the Eastern Jackson County Board of Elections at the corner of Liberty and Truman Road and without excuse vote absentee there. And just as a reminder, this is a tax that only Independence residents are eligible to vote for. So I've tried to answer as many of the questions we've heard out on the circuit, but I've also added my email to this last slide. If there are lingering remaining questions that we did not get to, please feel free to reach out to me if you've got a group that you think would be good for us to get to. We've tried to identify, as I mentioned, over 30 of those so far, but if there's still somebody that you would like us to get in contact with, please email me and let me know. Mr. Mayor, with that, I will yield to you and the council for any questions you have.
Anyone else, other questions? Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, we have done tours of the police department, and I'm just wondering, we have two more set up, and do you have those dates to share with people if they'd be interested in coming?
Let me ask Deputy Chief Peterson to pop up here real quick.
I know we have one on March 26th and then again on March 29th.
It was the times I was a little unsure of, and he's...
I'm gonna, I think I'm pretty, pretty confident that on the 26th, it's 6 to 8, and on the 29th, it's noon to 3:00, and you can show up for those. Please don't come at 2:55 and expect to get the tour that ends at 3:00. It'd be a very short tour. Rebecca is fact-checking me to be sure that I've got my dates and times right. Okay, I'm relatively confident those are correct.
Dates, yes, let me hear, let me get your times.
Sorry, I shouldn't ask a question that I don't know the answer to, so shame on me.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment while we're waiting, if I could, since we're, since we're waiting there. I just want to say thank you to you, Zach, and to the staff for the myriad of presentations you've made and the efforts that we've gone. I think, you know, my experience both in those presentations and walking door-to-door is that as people understand this, they understand the need for it, and I'm hopeful as we move closer to April 8th, but also want to invite, you know, any questions that the community might have to any of us as a council as well, so.
Well, I would, while we're waiting, I would also echo thank you to that side of the dais. Each of you have been out to these neighborhood presentations, helped... Each of you have been out to these neighborhood presentations, helped answer and address those questions as well, so very, very, very grateful for what's been a total team effort.
All right, they have confirmed those times are correct, so this Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., meeting in the lobby at the police department, and Saturday from noon to 3, also meeting in the lobby at the police department. We'd be delighted to have you come see our space. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else, other questions or comments before we proceed? Anything else? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One exciting time, this has been a conversation, like you were saying, Mr. Walker, for quite some time, ever since I got re-elected in 2016. This was a discussion point to reach here, but it was a road traveled through many community discussions, stakeholder meetings, and as you were saying, the downtown redevelopment coordinating report, which I know a lot of my colleagues are getting tired of me talking about, but it was such, probably one of the, one of the most important documents, I believe, that we've put together in my tenure up here, that has really given us a book to help navigate a lot of the issues, specifically in Western Independence and in the First District, and also that carries over into the Fourth District as well, to give us a good roadmap of how to tackle some of these challenges. And I think the progress is being, being made, and it's, surely we'll be seeing a little bit more so by the end of this summer and, and in the next year ahead of us. But within that, gave us a different funding tools and options and, and different ways to skin this animal that we're looking at here. I guess that was bad terminology for what we were saying, so apologize for that. So, but moving forward, we've been able to really put mechanisms in place, and I would say that this is a logical next step in, in that matrix of what we need to do to, to help with funding sources and, and seeing the council really putting its full shoulder and rolling this, this boulder up the hill with the meetings that we've attended and just talking within our own circles and getting out and walking and talking in the neighborhoods, I think really shows how important and dedicated that we are with wanting to see this be very successful, to move Independence forward, so a big thank you to, to you and your city staff and also the Chamber, Independence Chamber of Commerce, who really helped start some of this conversation too in, in 2023, when we were holding meetings in the summer and, and getting their information and getting their stakeholder input placed with, just formulating to where we are at now. So full court press from, from everybody, so pretty proud of, of what we have accomplished so far, so. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else before we wrap up? But thank you again for the presentation and well done and lots of facts and figures for people. If they want to know everything about the GeoBond, this is the thing to watch. It's, everything's there. So anybody else? With that, Mr. City Manager, we'll give you the last word if you want to before we adjourn.
Nothing else tonight, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.